Good morning and welcome to the November 5th, 2019 Calveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. Supervisor Callaway will not be joining us this evening. She has a previously engaged appointment, so we will move into closed session.
Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, two cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4.
Any public comments? Seeing none.
Item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
Any public comment regarding that? Seeing none.
Item three, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, closed session with county designated labor negotiator Che Johnson regarding employee organization, Service Employees International Union.
Public comment? Seeing none, we will go to closed session, returning at 9:00 a.m. Good morning and welcome back to the November 5th, 2019 Calveras County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you are able, will you please rise for Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, please lead us this morning.
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Report of today's closed sessions. Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, two cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. Supervisor Callaway was absent and Supervisor Stoppa recused himself. There was no reportable action taken. Item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. Supervisor Callaway was absent. There was no reportable action taken. Item three, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, closed session with county designated labor negotiator Che Johnson regarding employee organization, Service Employees International Union. Supervisor Callaway was absent. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. We will move on to the announcements.
Announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Thank you. Let me start off as Chair. We are going to have a special meeting at 1:30 today to ratify proclamation for the power safety, power shut-off events. That should only take a few minutes and I'll be set for time specific at 1:30. We will also do a poll at the end of today's meeting to find a time to do interviews for the auditor controller interviews. Supervisor Mills, you had a couple announcements.
Yes, I do. As everybody knows, the 11th day, 11th hour of the 11th month is coming up this Monday. That's Veterans Day and there will be a parade in Copperopolis at that time. For those that are interested in attending, please come down and join us. Copper Fire will be providing hot dogs and other things, so it's not just a parade. There's going to be a little bit of a mini event going on there. Secondly, if you were in the area of a Burns Ferry and Duchess just before you get to the bridge, be aware that the county has got a substantial project going on on that left turn pocket. Please be careful. That will be completed before the end of the year, but it's an area that needs your attention, especially at night. So, just note a caution.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli.
Yes, the 11th hour is when the parade starts?
Yes.
So, it'll be the 11th hour?
11:00.
11:00 a.m.?
11:00.
Okay.
I got some announcements from the staff.
I have one.
Madam Clerk.
So, I would like to announce the free drive-through flu clinic that's coming up on this Thursday, November 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. here in the government center parking lot for ages 10 and older. It is free, so come and get your flu shot.
Flu season's here. Anything else? Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions and acknowledgements.
Item four is from Health and Human Services to adopt a proclamation recognizing October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. I've asked Supervisor Toffenelli to lead this effort.
I have the proclamation here and it's my apologies.
Microphone.
I have the proclamation here and it's my apologies from the entire board that the dates on this, most people know that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And you signify that with a purple ribbon versus the pink ribbon. So, this proclamation is a little bit late. However, we will still like to recognize the fact that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, with this proclamation, whereas domestic violence touches the lives of Americans of all ages, leaving a devastating impact on women, men, and children of every background and circumstance, and whereas children who live in homes where there is domestic violence also suffer abuse or neglect at high rates, and whereas domestic violence is not solely physical, its emotional abuse can leave victims with scars as well, and whereas local services providers such as Resource Connection, the District Attorney's Office, and the Health and Human Services Agency, HHSA, provide programs and services to victims of domestic violence essential to helping them heal, and whereas providing services and support to victims of domestic violence increases their ability to successfully leave an abusive environment, whereas providing education on healthy relationships and services to perpetrators of domestic violence so they can take accountability for their actions and break the cycle of abuse is essential in preventing further harm to individuals and families, and whereas, and this is a little bit, I'm supposed to fluff this up a little bit, but it's a little bit past the date. I'm not sure if there's a new date that's been selected for this, but we, whereas we invited the community to join us for candlelight vigil and speak out event to honor those that have lost their lives to domestic violence, offer hope and support to those still facing abuse, and to celebrate all survivors of domestic and family violence on Thursday, October 24th, 2019, from 5:30 p.m. till 7:30 p.m. at the San Andreas Library patio located at 1299 Gold Hunter Road in San Andreas. Kristen?
Thank you. Public comment?
Public comment.
Good morning, Carter.
Morning, Robin.
I'm Robin Carter. I'm with Health and Human Services Agency. This is Wanda Dresser, also with Health and Human Services, and Jennifer Pruden, same agency.
Good morning.
First of all, thank you for having us here today. We did have this to be brought here to the board earlier, but PSPS pushed us out a little bit. We did hold the event on October 24th at the library. It was amazing. We had approximately 25 community members attend. We had a couple elected officials. Thank you, Jack, for being there. And Marita was there also. We had many speakers. We had two of our social workers from Health and Human Services. We had Heather O'Leary from Prevent Child Care Abuse. We had Barbara Yook, who is our district attorney. Celeste Mata with the Resource Connection Crisis Center. Wanda spoke regarding what she has endured the past year and a half in her life involving domestic violence. We did have a luminary candlelight vigil. Everybody took the luminaries out on the...
Bridge.
Bridge, thank you. And they actually stayed lit overnight, the flameless candles, want to let everybody know. So, it was an amazing event. The thing that made us happiest about this event is everybody talked about prevention and what we need to do and where it needs to start in our schools with our children. We can't be scared to speak about it and we can't be bothered not to listen to individuals who are talking about domestic violence. Thank you very much.
I'd like to add that it was a very powerful event and I hope people attended in the future. There's a lot of courage in that room and it was inspirational. So, thank you for all the work that you guys do on behalf of the county, for our citizens. I was hard pressed not to make everyone go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. We will make this a yearly event.
How about the public comment?
Good morning. My name is Laura Larson and I'm the Deputy Director of Social Services. From a child welfare perspective, I want you to know that domestic violence is by far one of the most difficult abuses to assess because it's so, it's not reported. The effects of domestic violence on children is hard to see and oftentimes we don't see the effects of it until years later when the effects start to manifest itself with behaviors. For example, children start to become aggressive themselves or they start to become scared and isolated. They grow up to have either become a victim or potentially become a perpetrator of domestic violence. It is very important that when we know that domestic violence is happening, that we reach out and we try and support the families. I would like to provide just some statistics for you. The Department of Justice estimates that 1.3 million women and 835,000 men are victims of physical violence by a partner every year. Oftentimes, we forget that there are men who are victims of domestic violence as well. That means that every nine seconds, a woman is being beaten or assaulted by a partner. One in four men are victims of some form of violence by their partner. More often than not, there are children present during domestic violence incidences. Last year, there were over 5 million children who were impacted by domestic violence. In Calveras County, about 45% of our calls that we receive, there is some element of domestic violence in it. Someone might call us to report general neglect and we might go out there to do our assessment and then find out that there is divorce going on or there is financial struggles or there is substance abuse going on. And in the midst of all that, there is domestic violence going on because the partners are fighting. So, in 2018, 492 calls involved some form of domestic violence. That's a lot when you look at there were only 785 calls of child abuse in 2018. Domestic violence oftentimes goes unreported for a variety of reasons. The victims and children are told not to tell. Don't tell because if you do, I will hurt your mother. Don't tell because if you do, I will hurt you. And that is real. They see the violence every day and that fear of being hurt themselves is very real. Family and friends who know domestic violence don't report it out of fear of getting someone in trouble. Who wants to call law enforcement or child welfare and report that their son or brother or in-law is hurting someone? They're afraid that they'll get arrested, they'll lose their job, and what will happen to the family then? Domestic violence goes unreported because it's not my business. It's not your business. It's their business. I'm sorry, but it is all of our business and when we don't make it our business, then women and men get hurt, children get hurt, and sometimes they even die. When in doubt, I would ask that we all reach out. If you're not sure that someone that you know is being hurt but you're hearing about it, or maybe you do know for sure, reach out. Call child welfare. You can call 755-6677 and just ask the question. You don't have to report abuse. You can just say, "Hey, I've heard of something going on. I'm not really sure. What do you think?" And we will listen to you and we will talk to you and maybe we'll even make a report. If you know that there's domestic violence happening and it's an emergency or it's happening right now, call 911. Those calls are confidential. The calls to us are confidential. No one's going to know. But at the end of the day, clearly the statistics show us that domestic violence is real and it's prevalent everywhere. And so, when we are aware of it's happening, please take the time to reach out and protect a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. The public comment on this item. Ms. Courtois.
There is a vacuum in a lot of people's lives. They have problems. Everybody does. And some people try to solve their problems by using drugs and alcohol. And it's very unpolitically correct to say anything against marijuana, but a lot of it starts right there.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm sorry, Ms. Garza.
Good morning. Lorie Garza, District 2. Domestic violence is real. It's in this room. I'm wondering if you're adopting October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to cover up the behavior of our CAO, Albert Alt, who is an accused sexual predator. What actions has the county taken to protect the women from CAO Alt's unwanted sexual Honestly, how can you possibly, in good conscience, adopt October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month when you're essentially encouraging this behavior by brushing the actions of our CAO under the rug? Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move this item.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli. For a second.
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 I wanted to comment, but that's all right.
I apologize. We have a motion. We have a second by Supervisor Stoppa. We have a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the comment and that is that although we are very aware of the physical violence that occurs, sometimes we're not aware of the emotional violence that precludes it and that carries forward in children's lives long after. So, just be aware of kids that are not really wanting to talk about it because it may be the emotional side that is being affected and you're being able to just take a moment to listen to them and be available. Might make the difference. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Very good point. Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes for 01 absentee. 1 absent? I got that right, Madam Clerk? All right. Come on down, ladies.
Let me read the rest of it.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Calveras County Board of Supervisors that the month of October 2019 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
All right, come on.
There we go. All right. Ready? 18.
We will move on to public comment. I think everybody here knows the rules. Three minutes. Please address the board and please begin.
Hi, my name's Bryce Randall. I'm from West Point. We know that in our communities and throughout our nation, that a lot of people love to serve. We saw a great response in our communities to the Butte fire. Often, people want to serve. They have time to serve, maybe an hour here and there, but they don't know where to go or how to find those opportunities. There's a new website and I've got some brochures here. It's called Just Serve. People that want to sponsor a Just Serve event, it can be nonprofits, it can be the library, schools, food banks, the fair board would probably benefit from something like this. We used it up in West Point for Lumberjack Day, trying to find volunteers to help and you just, as a sponsor, you go to the website, put your event on the website, and then people looking for an opportunity to serve can plug in a city or a zip code and anything that's out there with an opportunity to serve, they have access to that and they can go in and sign up and do that. Not many people know about the website and that's one of the big problems, but it is, you know, growing in popularity and access. So, I'll leave these with you and any organization that you hear of that's looking for volunteers, encourage them to go to this website and see if we can get this working. Because I think it's a great opportunity to help people find the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate it. If you give it to... Public speaker? If people who are intended to speak could line up by the door, no more than five deep, I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Kevin McAllister and I am a property owner in District 5. And I'm here today to speak for justice for Izzy and Silver. Now, I'm sure you guys have heard all the problems with the two miniature ponies that were killed by these dangerous dogs. A lot of people in District 5, Ben knows this, we have livestock and we can't have wild dogs running around killing our livestock. The county has done nothing to mitigate this problem. Animal control has done nothing. They've given the dogs back to somebody who the dogs should have been put down before they injure or kill other people's animals or kids or whatever. So, I'm asking for you guys to investigate this and investigate the animal control because if they can't control the animals, you know, what's the point of all this exercise? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Courtois?
Recently, I was working on the road I live on. There was a place where some new gravel was needed or the road would erode into the lake it was 35 years ago. Rocks that showed up in the middle needed to be removed also. So, crowbar in hand, I worked on the project over a period of a week or so. Wouldn't have taken so long, but being an old lady, I look a lot. I took a lot of rest besides it was hot. There's a new greenhouse that is close to the road and an RV parked in front of it. The smell emanating from it, from the greenhouse made you want to hold your breath, especially when the breeze wafted my way. I heard that marijuana gives us ozone, which is not good to breathe, kind of like smog. During the time I was working out there, my nose was swollen and I had a nosebleed, which hasn't happened to me in years. Recently, in Eldorado, a law enforcement officer was killed in a pot enforcement operation, an occult sacrifice to the pot god.
Thank you. Speaker? Ms. Garza?
I'm really concerned about the ethics and the transparency. There's so much transparency in this room and that's why I'm running for District 2, First, you passed the marijuana ordinance. It's the people's, the residents' tax dollars. They're the ones that's at risk here. You don't even have a plan. And if you do have a plan, it's not a plan that you're willing to share with the people. This is very concerning. Supervisor Toffenelli clearly spoke regarding the concerns of the funding for this new The last meeting and he was deliberately ignored by the chair. Why is that, Jack? The lack of manageable game plan or a business plan. Where is it? This demonstrates the need for the new leadership in our community. We're tired of the good old boys' network, way of doing business in the chambers. We want transparency and the residents' concerns addressed. You have already voted 3-2 on the ordinance without publicizing any of the standard businesses requiring details. Shame on you for that. I intend to counter this behavior when I get elected by the voters. The second issue I want to bring up is the dogs. It's unbelievable that these dogs were actually released back to their owner. There was nothing done. You watched the videos? Did you watch the videos? Because if you didn't, you really should. It's horrible that these dogs were released. And now that you voted back in the marijuana ordinance, there's only going to be more dogs in my district, more pit bulls, more killings, more murders. You weren't even concerned that the dogs were released without checking for rabies shots or a dog license because in Jack's world, that's an intrusion of privacy. With more commercial marijuana, we're only going to have more issues. I anticipate some of the problems you are creating are only going to get worse.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garza. Mr. Moore?
I'm Will Moore from District 5 and many years ago, I lived in Vacaville when Vacaville had a dehydrator there and they dehydrated garlic. And Vacaville in those days was kind of a local joke. You could smell Vacaville miles coming and miles leaving on Old Highway 40. And we see often advertised here in the local market, Harris Ranch Beef. Well, I've eaten at the Harris Ranch Restaurant and it's a big stinking feedlot, cattle lot. So, actually, I like the smell of marijuana. I mean, compared to some of the possible alternatives, it's pretty good. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Next speaker. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board and move on to consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any members of the board? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Item 10 and 19.
10, 19. The items on the board? Staff? Public? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion for the remainder... So, moved. Moved by Supervisor Mills. Second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item 10 is from Human Resources to adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list for fiscal year 2019 and '20 with the addition of two deputy probation officers and a probation aide funded by the pretrial grant program.
Ms. Hawkins? Yes, I pulled this item. I just have an issue with creating new positions that are grant-funded. Instead of putting them on as extra hires or whatever, once the grant funding disappears, we now have these positions that we have to encompass, much like we did with the urgency ordinance. I just... I just, I just have an issue expanding with grant funding that is not permanent funding, that grant could dry up and go away next year. So that's my concern with this item.
So I had a, good morning, Chair, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And I do apologize, Sam Leach wanted to be here this morning, but during the PSPS event, we had to cancel interviews and reschedule. And so we had to reschedule interviews for the probation department for today. I did have a discussion with him regarding these positions being limited term. And with this, the pretrial program, which will be coming, the full program will be coming to the board for adoption, I believe, at the next board meeting. It is something that is going to be here. The program will not be going away. We will be required to provide these services. I know that Mr. Leach has had a lot of conversations with Judge Healy on this. And so we know that finding deputy probation officers on a good day is extremely difficult. Trying to hire deputy probation officers on a limited-term basis is almost impossible. And the fact that we do have, there is a turnover, it's almost like we do with deputies. Often, you know, having a few more positions is not something that I think would be detrimental to the budget, because we are constantly getting them in, training, and often we see them leave to go to larger counties. And so to make sure that we are keeping our levels up to what we need, often we have to have a few more positions.
Well, I would like to see this, at least, this visited annually at the budget hearings, especially these three positions. It may not, the program may not be going away, but who's to say if the economy turns down, grant funding goes away? And then we are here and have these positions that we've expanded on. Whether we have a hard time recruiting people or not, just expanding our position list is not the answer. And I understand that this is a program, it's an initial program. I read what little was presented to us here. But my concern again is, it's grant funding. It's not ongoing funding. A grant's a grant. And we've all dealt with grants, and know what happens with grants. Eventually, they go away. If the courts want to move to make this permanent, then I could understand. Okay, fine, that's no longer grant, it's continuing money from the state for this program. But at this point, again, expanding our control list to add these new positions with funding that is a grant, I just, I still have an issue with it. And I would have an issue if it wasn't just probation. I think I've expressed that concern before, when we were trying to hire for grant, off grant, that it needs to be separated, not just encompassed. That's my opinion. I don't know where the rest of the board is on this issue, but I just have an issue with that.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, additionally, the concern would be with these positions and the difficulty in finding people for them, that are we in essence creating ghost positions that may never be filled? Or how long will it take for us to bring somebody online? And if the grant does go away next year, or they require more funding from the county and our funding to take care of it, I would like to also see this as something that we have a clearer discussion of in each budget year, so that we can understand whether or not this is worthwhile for us to be involved in, or the state needs to take it back. So just my comment.
Recurring expenses being put forward and without seeing the revenue continue is, I mean, Supervisor Toffenelli brings up a very good point. We have to be pragmatic about how we move forward in the future. And I think, you know, the temporary, you do make a point about the temporary positions are harder to fill, but we can't make a permanent position when there's not permanent money coming in.
Well, one of the things, you know, when we address vacancies, and I know Supervisor Mills, we are definitely looking hard at our vacancies that we have open on every budget. We are making sure that underfills, that we are cleaning those up. And in this case, we can look at vacancies that are within the department from a budget standpoint in looking at the grant. But I do think that from a recruiting standpoint, it will be near impossible to recruit a deputy probation officer on a limited-term basis.
Would you, at least me to another question then, is that this grant is in the budget for this year. If we don't fill any of these positions, or we fill even a portion of these positions, will it affect the total amount of funds available in the grant that's hinged on the actual position being filled?
I believe the grant was for multi, it was a multi-year grant.
Multi-year. But will it affect, if we don't have these positions filled, will it affect the grant?
It says in, under alternatives, such action is not recommended as it would result in grant funds being lost, is part of the item.
And so I really, I would need Sam to speak to the specifics of that.
Okay. Again, my concern would be is, is if we don't fully fill the positions, we then are probably not going to fully have the funding from the grant for those positions. And our budget is contingent on those positions being fully funded and fully filled when we pass the budget in September. Just a point.
Again, I would, you know, and I understand the situation here with Sam, and he's interviewing, apparently, today for these positions. I would just like the caveat somewhere in here, that we revisit annually at budget these three positions to find out whether there's grant funding for them or not, or any funding available for these positions. That's all that I ask for me to order to go forward with this. I have some concerns of where we're at in going forward with our budget. As you know, I did not vote for the budget as it was presented to us. I see us with the grant going away, if the economy turns next year, so forth, the grant goes away. We have employees that are permanent employees. And the state's going to put it on our backs to pay for it, or we still get rid of them. Obviously, they're going to interview, they've reached out and applied for this job, they know it's grant-funded. So if he's doing interviews, those people he's interviewing understand it's grants.
Supervisor Toffenelli, I want to clarify, the interviews that he is in, it's not for these positions. He's in interviews for open positions in his department.
Okay. I thought she meant it was for this.
Yeah, he can't do interviews until the positions are created.
I was trying to avoid that, but okay. It's not for these positions. But even when they apply for it, they see grants. But as long as we can bring this forward, somewhere in this, that if we're going to make a motion to prove it, that we visit these three positions annually, so we can see where the funding is still available, what's going on with it, are there funds available to continue with it, or what have you? That would be, for me, in any motion that I would agree to.
Let me call for public comment on this item. Is there public comment on this item? Seeing none. Supervisor Toffenelli, do you have a motion?
I would move this item, provided, again, that part of the motion is that we revisit, revisit these at the budget hearings annually on available funds for these positions.
Okay. Sir, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli, second by Supervisor Mills. Did you have anything you want to add? Very well, then I'll call a vote. Hall of favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes four zero one, absent.
Item nineteen is from the Office of Emergency Services, to adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation by the Director of Emergency Services for PSPS event on October eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Good morning. Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes, and I had a conversation with County Council on this, this item and this issue. We're citing County Code two point seven-two with the authority for you to declare it, which you did. The concerns I have is what that item says under E. It says, "The Director may proclaim the existence of a local emergency if the Board of Supervisors is not in session. Whenever a local emergency is proclaimed by the Director, the Board of Supervisors shall take action to ratify the proclamation within seven days thereafter, or the proclamation shall have no further force or effect." That's what the County Code says. And I brought this up and had a conversation with County Council on it. I believe there's another one coming forward here too, that doesn't fall within the seven-day period. So I question as to whether the validity of this, if we make the declaration ratifying the proclamation, would it withstand any pressure on it at all, being the fact that it's almost a month afterwards when our code says seven days?
I just want to clarify, our code does say seven days, but reading the government code that dovetails with our code, it's that it has, the board has to ratify the proclamation within seven days for it to be ongoing, for it to be in further force and effect. And so it's my understanding that this declaration ended at that seven-day mark, and so there wasn't a need for that declaration to be ongoing. But that, in looking at seeking reimbursement, the state is asking for a board ratification of the declaration, even though it is not an ongoing event. And so that's why John is, excuse me, Mr. Osborne, has brought this proclamation forward to be ratified for purposes of submitting it to the state, but it is not an ongoing event.
And it doesn't specifically say an ongoing event. It says his proclamation is of October eighth, if I read it correctly, is what it says. So I just wanted to point that out, and it's specifically calling County Code. In the resolution, it specifically calls out Calaveras County Code Section two point seven-two. It does say Government Code Section eight-six-three-oh, but it is specifically calling out that. And my intentions are to bring this out and bring it forward, that whenever there's a proclamation that you state and put out, that whether we're in session or not, that there is that code that states seven days within the county, and that we need to be aware of it.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm agreeing with Supervisor Toffenelli on this, is that it would be in our best interest that if we are, our OES director is going to be declaring a state of emergency, that the board convene as soon as physically possible, within that seven-day period, for the purpose of confirming that that action is, is what they want. And I have a problem with us waiting this long to actually bring this before the board. The board could convene at any time in an emergency meeting for the purpose of ratifying such an action. So if this is something that we need to do to be sure that the state is reimbursing us, I understand that, but I would hope that we would change our direction in the future, and that the board be given an opportunity to weigh in on these issues within that seven-day period that we are calling for, within two point seven.
Okay. John, do you have a statement, or should we move to public comment?
Welcome to go to public comment.
Do you have public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Further discussion or a motion?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Toffenelli, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes four zero one, absent. All right, it's ten o'clock, we are moving on to a regular agenda. I am going to call a ten-minute break now. We're ten at ten-ten.
Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for November fifth. We are now convening a special meeting to discuss PSPS. This is led by OES. This meeting is now called to order.
Item one is from the Office of Emergency Services, to adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation by the Director of Emergency Services for public safety power shutdown events on October twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, through October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Good afternoon, Board, welcome back. John Osborne, your OES director. I do need to make a slight correction. I have not made a proclamation of local emergency. The resolution before you is for you guys to proclaim a local emergency. Semantics, but I did not declare during that time. That's why we called the special meeting, so that you could. This event began on October twenty-third, is actually when we were de-energized, and we were not fully re-energized until the evening of Halloween. It affected most, if not all, of our county communities in one way or another. And we've determined, well, I feel that it is beyond the scope of our local resources, and would encourage you guys to declare a local emergency.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there further discussion or a motion?
So moved. Is there any wording needing to be changed with the fact that we're making the proclamation?
The resolution language specifies that the board is declaring the emergency.
Understood. So moved.
So moved, we have a motion by Supervisor Stopper, your second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes four zero one, absent. I am now adjourning this special meeting, and thank you. Ouch. All right, we will now resume our regular meeting. I believe we're on item twenty-six, Madam Clerk, is that correct?
Item twenty-six is from the Administrative Office, to introduce and waive reading of the ordinance superseding and replacing the current Title III, Chapter three dot two-nine of the Calaveras County Code entitled Bidding Procedures for Public Projects, and replacing it with a new Chapter three dot two-nine of the Calaveras Code entitled Bidding Procedures for Public Projects. Establishing signatory thresholds consistent with the thresholds authorized as set forth in the Public Contract Code, and clarifying the delegation of authority to certain individuals within the county with responsibility for authorizing the performance of public projects governed by Public Contract Code, and authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Ms. Rich?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bonnie Rich, Administration. This item comes to you just as the board clerk summarized. The highlights are to increase our thresholds for negotiated contracts in formal bidding and informal bidding, to clarify the, and update the position titles for the folks within the counties that perform that work. We have added provisions that require us to comply with federal and state procurement requirements first, and then through the application of our own procedures. And we've included some definitions to clarify what certain items relative to public projects mean. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation. I will go through the changes. I wanted to highlight a couple of areas for the board, and then open it up for any specific questions that you might have. First of all, the board should know that in two thousand and six, the County of Calaveras opted in to comply with... to comply with the uniform or participate under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act of 1983. And basically, that act promotes uniformity in the bidding procedures and accounting standards and the performance of public projects. We are one of 43 out of 58 counties who have opted in. That is a process that has to, there is a process for that. It has to be filed with the State Controller's Office and approved by the State Controller's You should also know that the State Controller appoints a commission of about 14 folks, individuals with varying backgrounds in the construction industry, to review what those bidding thresholds should be. And they take into consideration mostly material and labor costs, as we know those increase over time. The Accounting Act says that under this process of evaluating the cost, if the commission recommends an increase to those limits, it has to increase those limits by at least $15,000. Our limits have been rather low for some time. I cannot tell you, I don't know for sure when we last adopted our limits. Our current limits are anything over $25,000 basically requires a formal bidding procedure. We have the ability to use informal bidding procedures if we have other processes in place like maintaining a bidder's list and whatnot that generally we haven't been really good at. We're working on that now. The state has approved and put in place effective January of this year increased limits, which now this revised amended ordinance reflects that we would be able to, if your Board so chooses to approve, entering into a negotiated contract, do the work by force account, or issue a purchase order up to $60,000 without engaging any bidding process whatsoever. The new limits for informal bidding would be between $60,000 and $200,000, in which we would still go through a bidding process. We have to notify bidders, we have to publish in trade journals, we have to do all the formal things we would normally do under a formal, mostly under a formal process, except that we wouldn't need to bring the plans and specs to the Board for approval before we advertise. And then finally, consistent with Public Contract Code, staff is recommending that the formal bidding threshold be set at $200,000 whereby all of those bids would then have to come before this Board for approval. So that is the gist of it. The position cleanup items, our ordinance reference some old titles that we don't have anymore. The folks that are primarily engaged in contracting for public projects are the Director of Public Works, the Deputy CAO over Facilities and CIP, and the Deputy CAO over Integrated Waste Management, and of course, the County CAO and Purchasing Agent. All of those folks are the folks that would be authorized to enter into those agreements or bidding processes other than those that require the Board's approval. I think one important thing that I left out is a key definition of actually what a public project even is. And that is the construction, reconstruction, erection, alteration, renovation, improvement, demolition, or repair work involving any publicly owned leased or operated facility, or the painting or repairing of any publicly owned leased or operated facility. The term "public project" does not include routine maintenance work, including the routine recurring and usual work for the preservation and protection of any publicly owned or publicly operated facility. And for this purpose, that includes minor repainting, resurfacing of streets and highways at less than one inch thickness, landscape maintenance, mowing, watering, trimming, pruning, pruning, planting, replacement of plants, servicing of irrigation, sprinkler systems, and whatnot, or any items for the acquisition of supply, the materials otherwise called out for in the county's separate purchasing ordinance. One change that we did make in the emergency section, and we have an item coming up after this one that will speak to this a little bit, but we, there are only two exceptions for not bidding public projects. And one is if we are going to build a, and I don't know why or how this has come to, but a juvenile forest camp, or under, in the case of an emergency.
Pardon?
Right now, and...
Did you say that last part?
It's, I'm not making this up.
Okay.
It's in here, it's in the state accounting standard.
Somebody slipped a ringer in there. This is in the state code?
It's in the...
It's in the state code.
State code. Okay, don't worry.
Yeah, Public Contract Code.
It's okay, that's just...
Yeah, no, it's in there.
Those ridiculous things we deal with. It's okay, not yours.
So in the case of an emergency, staff where normal bidding would be required, we would have to come before your Board and ask your Board to make a finding that time does not permit the bidding process, and ask your Board to dispense with bidding, and then let a contract for the urgent repair or work that needs to be performed. We have included in here that the Board, by majority vote, may delegate to the Chief Administrative Officer the power to declare a public emergency subject to confirmation by the Board of Supervisors by a four-fifth vote at its next available meeting. We have not done that previously. Those are generally the highlights of the amendments to the public ordinance as it currently stands. Staff, again, is clearly recommending that we establish the thresholds consistent with Public Contract Code. The value in doing that is streamline bidding procedures, less administrative burden, quicker delivery of projects, being able to use informal bidding procedures, being able to use the alternative bidding procedures such as the job order contracting, JOP, process that our Director of Public Works has brought forward to the Board. These are all good things. But the thresholds essentially, while staff is, and one more note, we also have written it so that anytime Public Contract Code grows, we would grow with it, if that's what the Board chooses to do, rather than define a specific amount and then anytime public code changes, have to amend the ordinance to go with it. So I know for me personally, on the facility side, being limited to $25,000 to let a contract for a small public project is extremely limiting, and it's very frustrating to both the facilities' manager and myself. We're not able to get some projects done as quickly as we would like to. That increased delegation of authority to use, to just let a negotiating contract up to $60,000 is huge, would be huge for us, and the Public Works Director would also benefit from that. But it's clearly a policy decision for the Board if the informal, informal bidding procedures that we have recommended are not limits that the Board wants to entertain at this time. I just wanted to remind the Board that that is, that is the decision you can make. If we make any major substantive changes, I don't think dollar thresholds would be included, but then we would have to bring the item back for introduction again. My goal is to have this item approved today and come back to the Board for adoption at its first meeting in December. So December the 10th is the plan right now.
Questions? Supervisor Mills?
Yes, thank you. Do we currently have a list of qualified contractors?
That's what we refer to as having a master bidder's list, and we are there in a couple of different ways. We need to do a little better, but right now, the county utilizes, as many municipalities utilize, is a third-party e-procurement system whereby we post all of our competitive solicitations, and within that system, there are vendors that register to be notified. So that satisfies a big part of that process. The other thing, the other thing that we've done in the last year is I've worked closely with Public Works to issue a more global, what we call a request for qualifications for various areas of expertise and disciplines that we, where we reached out and said, hey, we're going to have a need for all of these different types of services. Tell us if you're interested in doing business with the county and how you're qualified. That process also gets us there. We have started tracking internally in the Administrative Office on the procurement side. We have started developing master bidder's lists. What we need to do is have a system in place where we are tracking bidders who are either non-responsive, or if they fail to respond. We kind of need a policy or a procedure that's kind of like a, you know, three strikes and you're out. Not permanently, not forever, but the goal is to maintain a list of qualified responsive, responsible bidders from which we choose, from which to choose from. So on many levels, we have, we have it, we're working towards making it better.
I'm familiar with, and I've worked with Dodge Scan over the years, so it's an example of what you're talking about. Is there any of these projects that could be allowed to work under local preference, or is that strictly forbidden on all things that we do?
That is generally not applied towards construction, public project.
Okay.
Excuse me, no, and specifically prohibited when we're using federal dollars.
By federal, federal projects, right.
Yeah, it depends on where the funding is coming from.
Mike, Mike.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Section 3.29.06, talking about change orders. We had a threshold of 15% on change orders for contracts, at which point, after which point, they would have to go back for a further review. I don't see a threshold in here, and change orders could drive projects substantially awry, and it's an opportunity for a Board or those that make the decision to determine, did we really scope this project correctly, or is there something we missed? Can we put some kind of a percentage threshold in here?
Yeah, their Public Contract Code specifically defines the limits for which we can issue change orders on projects, and the purpose of those limits is to prevent contractors from bidding slow and then coming in, right, and issuing change orders. It wreaks havoc on a project, it delays projects, and ends up putting us over budget oftentimes. So there are, the Public Contract Code specifically says what we can do with change orders, and I believe if a contract is less than $50,000, the change order cannot be more than $5,000. If it's between 50 and, I'd have to pull up the code exactly, I think it's, if I can pull it up.
That's okay, I just, I just want to be...
There are safeguards in place for that. It depends on the total value of the contract. So under the lowest dollar contract, change order cannot exceed more than $5,000.
And then it's a percentage.
There you go, you got it up. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's in Public Contract Code, it's 20142. And so that's all prescribed by state law, and there are, you're exactly right, there are dollar thresholds and percentage thresholds for change orders.
I used to carry around a clipboard with change orders and my contract, so refer to the contract, here's a change order, is the way it worked. Being subject to the next board meeting could be up to two weeks away. Is there any way that we might have a different provision in there to speed up the process? In other words, what you were talking about is you could approve something subject to the Board in their next meeting. That's what you stated.
Are you referring to the ordinance?
No, no, the ordinance. You said in the next meeting that...
I have missed the deadline for the 19th, so I...
Okay.
That's why I have to bring it back for the 10th.
All right.
And then provided the, I know that you're already familiar with this process, but for the public's purpose, after the Board adopts it, it would then go into effect 30 days thereafter.
Right, and the goal here is, is that for instance, Public Works projects, to be able to move these projects along quickly when the time is of the essence, weather's of the essence, that kind of thing. I'm sure that there's been some projects we've had delayed simply because we got bound up in this purchasing agreement.
Absolutely.
So I understand the reason for doing it. Thank you for your responses.
Questions from the Board? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board for further discussion or a motion.
Chair, I'll move the item.
Item is moved by Supervisor Mills, is our second.
I'll second.
Movement, second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries 4-0-1 absent.
The next item is...
Thank you very much, Bonnie.
Item 27 from the Administrative Office to make findings that an emergency exists and that action is necessary to respond to such emergency, to dispense with formal competitive bidding requirements pursuant to County Ordinance Title III, Chapter 3.29, Bidding Procedures for Public Projects, and Chapter 2.5, Emergency Contracting Procedures, Section 22050 of the Public Contract Code, and authorize the purchasing agents to let an emergency contract with Sunbelt Controls Incorporated of West Sacramento, California, for emergency repairs to the boilers and related mechanical control systems at the adult detention facility. This requires a four-fifths vote of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Chair and members of the Board, Bonnie Rich Administration. This is a perfect example of an item. If we had the increased thresholds, I wouldn't have to have brought this forward to your Board. We could have simply let a contract and completed the necessary repairs. So we had a failure of the scullery and domestic hot water systems at the adult detention facility. Our facility manager, Patrick Martin, and one of our qualified contractors, Sunbelt Control, worked quickly to get a temporary fix in place. However, there is a more permanent fix that needs to occur. The total value of that work under contract is $28,846. The Board is being asked to make findings that this is an emergency, given that this is a controlled facility. We need this equipment fixed, these controls fixed right away, excuse me, the boilers. And we anticipate in the event the Board approves this item, about approximately... And we anticipate, in the event the Board approves this item, about approximately 14 days to get all of the work complete. In fact, maybe even less. I believe Patrick has worked with the contractor to get the parts on hand and ordered and in place. I don't expect that this item would remain on the Board's calendar beyond one more board meeting unless we run into some unanticipated event. But again, at this time, the Board is just asked to make findings that this is an emergency and allow us to dispense with bidding and let a contract with Sun Belt Control to complete the repairs necessary for the boilers up at the adult detention facility.
Questions from the Board? Supervisor Stoppert, your lights on?
I probably have the same questions.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
So I'll let him go first. Yeah, I have some questions on the financing part of it. I'm a little bit confused as to what this is trying to say. It's saying that we have, emergency work has been budgeted and is available within the facilities maintenance and grounds under 10100110 budget unit under professional specialized services. Then it goes on and says that this work is currently funded by TEATER Special Revenue Fund. The total cost of the work performed in this emergency repair will need to be transferred. Well, it's already budgeted in a line item. Why are we transferring and need a four-fifths vote?
That was probably a, well, no, and it will. Given the dollar thresholds that the former auditor controller brought forward to the Board in establishing the thresholds for fixed assets, capital assets, and capital improvement projects, that threshold for reporting or enrolling a capital improvement project is set at $25,000. This contract is $28,000. So sometime between now and mid-year, we are going to have to put that in CIP and report it as a capital, a facility betterment. That's what that means.
So then my question is, then, we are taking this out of TEATER funds. It wasn't actually budgeted under this line item, that at some point in mid-year, you're going to ask us to dip into TEATER again to pay these funds?
No. We have, within the facility's budget, I think there might be some confusion, within the facility's budget, there are various professional services-
Correct.
... and other small dollar construction contracts that we have budgeted and are funded by TEATER. All of them.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm aware of that.
Okay, I'm confused then. I'm not understanding.
Okay, but we line item this, okay? You say the funds are available under a line item.
I have a line item for emergency repairs, unanticipated emergency repairs.
Okay. So what you're basically saying is even though we have it in a line item and it's been budgeted, we need to transfer the funds into the account?
I will have to enroll it as a capital project. No funds will need to be, yes, it will have to be moved to the CIP.
That's why you want a four-fifths vote.
No, actually, I just wanted to clarify on that point. A four-fifths vote is required on this item because to declare an emergency under the Public Contracts Code, to dispense with formal bidding and just do the contract, that requires a four-fifths vote. So notwithstanding any, I can't speak to the money piece, but it requires a four-fifths vote regardless.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
And Supervisor Toffenelli, you are correct, because if I'm going to change the overall picture of any budget or transfer money from one budget unit to another, you are absolutely correct. That will require a four-fifths vote.
Okay. So it will be coming back mid-year or sometime to make the adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm going to quote you on that.
Okay.
So I want to be sure here that I understand that the 10-10, 1-10 account does have the funds necessary to do the emergency repair?
Yes, sir.
So why do we need to talk about TEATER?
TEATER already funds a majority of the facility's contracted out work. It has been that way for years.
Well, let's say I got $200,000 in this facilities maintenance and grounds budgeted line item. It's already there. I don't need to take it and move it from somewhere else to there. It's already there in the budget.
It's already in the budget. I'm not hearing you. It is in the facility's budget. We have the funds appropriated. Your Board has adopted the budget. The TEATER Special Revenue Fund funds a portion of expenses associated with the facility's budget. So we already have built into the budget, transfers out from TEATER into facilities to cover those costs. We move those, we make those adjustments as the expenses are incurred. We're not asking to pull money from anywhere new. It will not require any consideration of additional funds. That is just how the facility's, the majority of the facility's budget is set up with regards to services that we contract out for. Historically, TEATER has funded those.
I guess I'm going to have to draw this out of chalkboard somewhere because I don't see the need for TEATER, but we can talk offline about that later. Thank you.
All right. I'll call for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for the Board. Is there further discussion or is there a motion?
I just want to make a couple of comments on this. And again, we had this conversation, I've had this conversation since I came back onto this Board. And it may be something different than what's before us, but the root of it is still there. And that's Kitchell, the project manager that we hired for this project, and what they turned over to us. And we should never be in this position had it been turned over to us properly. There is another boiler, that was an emergency boiler, that was supposed to go into use when we had maintenance or a failure of this boiler, so we would not be in the position we're in now. It's never worked properly, this whole system, along with a couple of other systems in there. And we need to go back and we need to put some pressure on Kitchell to rectify this situation instead of us continually spending our dollars again to fix something that should have been their problem to begin with. Regular maintenance items on these boilers and dryers and so forth, I could certainly understand. But just the fact that we're in this position, truly, as a Board, we need to have a discussion about getting Kitchell back here and having a discussion. So those are my comments. And with that, I'll move this item.
If a motion, Supervisor Toffenelli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stoppert. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Carries 401. We don't have a presentation being set up here, do we? Let's just go.
Okay. So item 28 is from the administrative office. To authorize the Board Chair to execute the Sixth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Gambi Disposal Incorporated for operation of the county's solid waste transfer stations at a base facility fee of $124,047 per month for either a one-year or a 10-year period.
Mr. Moss?
Good afternoon. Brian Moss, Administrative Office, representing Integrated Waste Management. The first thing I would like to state is that it was brought to my attention, and the Board is probably aware of this at this point, that the original 2004 contract that we're working off as a base document today that was issued to Gambi in 2004 by the Board was missing some pages. So with that said, what I have done is I've taken the liberty of making a copy and also electronic copies sent to the Board. Again, this reference document, what's before you today are two options as stated by the Board Clerk, and that is, this is a Sixth Amendment proposal for the Gambi contract. You have two options before you today, obviously. One is a one-year contract extension. The other one is a 10-year contract extension. This current contract expires at the end of December, this current calendar year. So with that said, we are proposing to, again, give the Board a couple of options as to which way to go on looking at a contract extension. Today, staff is recommending the 10-year, and I'll tell you why. There are so many moving parts in integrated waste. And we've had the program in administration for about 15 months as directed by the Board. With that said, so many moving parts, including our contracts, things are moving very, very quickly in this program. The Board approved a couple items for IWM this morning, significant, including Clean Harbors, which is great for the three-year contract, a BPO for our fuel. Those are all good things, and the Board is seeing these contracts and other items come before the Board on a rather regular basis, and will continue to do so. So with that said, there are items within sight of the one-year versus 10-year contract to allow Gambi to continue to move forward in running the transfer stations. Now, the transfer stations are actually owned by the county, okay? They are not owned by Gambi. Gambi provides the equipment at these transfer stations, the compactors, et cetera. Their primary responsibilities are to tend those stations and transport the materials, both recyclables and waste, out of the area. So recyclables will go sometimes to Cal Waste, they'll go to other areas, like the cardboard now goes to Cal Waste, because that market's turned upside down, but that's a story for another day. And then the solid waste actually goes to our landfill. So that's their primary responsibility. You'll see that there have been five amendments since 2004. This amendment is one that actually shows, as you'll see in your Board packet, an increase of 5.25%. It also includes adding a day to the operations in Copperopolis Transfer Station. By the way, that's beginning to rival our Avery Transfer Station in volume. That's pretty darn impressive. And those of you may recall, the Avery Transfer Station was redesigned and redone by, actually, the designing engineer was Mark Davis, who's part of our IWM staff. Also, I want to state that Mark Zan and Phil Jimbastiani is with us today from Gambi for questions for your contractor, okay? Because they are currently your contractor. There's the also proposal for adding generators, five generators, minus Paloma because there's a lack of volume there. That can always be tweaked, of course, but realistically, we're looking at volume. And ironically, during the first PSPS event we had, all of our transfer stations were out of power except for Paloma. So, see, there was a feather and a half for that one. And then Gambi shall continue to maintain a performance bond or letter of credit, shall be compensated for the use of the corporation yard for collection and disposal of recyclables. They can address that in further detail. That's something that was done in the last several years where, as you know, Cal Recycle keeps pushing and pushing and pushing for diversion. Right now, we're at 50% diversion through AV939. The next step is going to be 75% diversion. And where are they going to go from there? We're losing credit on our alternative daily cover in terms of using, like as an example, the green waste, the dirty material, literally dirty material, because it's dirt mixed in with the pine needles, that we grind up over at Red Hill. What do we do with that material? Cal Recycle's saying, you can't use that anymore for credit for your landfill. So there's a lot of diversion tactics from being given to us from the state. The good news is, is it gives us longer longevity on our landfill, okay? So that's really good. But still, nonetheless, lots of changes in this program. And it's amazing to see what's coming out from the legislature rather consistently and through Cal Recycle with IWM. Just a real moving target. The generator issue is one where was actually the idea to put that in a proposed contract or a contract extension before the PSPS events even started. So it may look to the Board that, oh, we've had the PSPS, let's put generators in there. Actually, that was something that both our engineer and Gambi talked about months ago. And I think it's actually a very good idea. There are other items in this as well. You'll see that there's a rather large area of safety considerations. I won't go over those point by point. What I can tell you is when administration took over IWM, a good example of that was going up to the Red Hill Annex and the lights didn't work. The hardline phone didn't work, and people were leaving this time of year in the dark. We have since, as approved by the Board, changed the hours of the transfer stations so that staff leave an hour early. We fixed their lights first thing and fixed their hardline first thing as well, because cell phones aren't necessarily good in that little area. So those are just examples of safety considerations, not to mention all the safety issues we're dealing with at Rock Creek, as well as brought forward by our safety officer, who's been a real, real, real positive influence on integrated waste. So with that said, the recommendation before you again today is to extend the Gambi contract. I know there's a lot of information in that contract. There's a lot of information in the 2004 original document. Again, I apologize that that came in every other page rather than consistently, and I want to thank Supervisor Toffenelli for bringing that to my attention. So again, you have an electronic copy of that. There's copies here up on the podium for the public as well. So with that said, what I'm going to do is, would like to turn this over to the Board. Again, I have Gambi representatives here, and we have our IWM engineer here as well to field questions.
Questions from the Board? Supervisor Mills?
Thank you. Green waste at Copperopolis. I know that it really isn't a problem for the locals, except we've got some contractors down there or yard contractors that would rather run there than run to Rock Creek. Is there a way for us to ensure that what is being dropped at that transfer station is truly from private residences and not from contractors?
Well, that's a really good-
No matter where you are in the county, if I have, for instance, a large amount of roofing material, I can't take and drop that at their Red Hill facility. I have to haul that down to Rock Creek. Is there a way that we can kind of control the amount of green waste that's coming into that spot?
There's a couple of ways we can do it. First of all, the Copperopolis facility is pretty well limited in terms of area right now. We actually have a design on the books showing a remodel and redo of that transfer station similar to Avery.
Because you've got five acres down there.
Exactly. Exactly. And we're not using much of it. Of course, all of this costs money, and this is one of the things we're looking at even with our RFPs. What would it cost to actually build out that transfer station since its volume's increasing so much? But just even as Red Hill is an example, which is our main yard waste facility, we take yard waste in Willseyville as well. But that facility, even that, they're limited to, was it four or five cubic yards?
Four.
Four. Four cubic yards. So with Copperopolis, what we can do is do a limitation, number one, of how much they can bring in. Number two, it's going to be even more limited-
Per day.
Per day. And even more limited than Red Hill. Why? Because you have one compactor. Now, I do know that the green waste program in Copperopolis has been a real challenge for your contractor. That's been very, very clear. And it mainly is because of the point that Supervisor Mills just stated, and that is, you've got landscapers coming in saying, and I think we had the program maybe a month before I got my first call from a landscaper saying they won't take my green waste. Well, it turned out to be a landscaper who's bringing in large volumes. That cuts out the residents. That cuts out the residents, okay? When in fact, all they needed to do is go down Rock Creek Road and out to the landfill and dispose of it. So as far as, as far, the other part of your question was, how do we assure that, that there are residents that are even bringing it in? Am I correct?
Correct.
So I do know that there is a load check program in place, and I'm going to let Mark Zahn speak to that a little bit more, but can we approve upon that? Yes, probably we can. One of the things we're looking at is connectivity at our transfer stations. Couple reasons. Payment for whether it's yard waste or other materials where it requires a fee, and also the assurance that indeed, that these are Calaveras residents. So I know that there's more, there's more tweaks to that, because some people just buy property here and they're not going to have a car. So we need, it is, that is something that is going to be a little bit in, in motion or malleable, okay? I understand that, but I'm going to, I'm going to have Mark address that, that issue regarding residency.
Hi, I'm Mark Zahn, Gambi disposal. What we have is, we ID check, and I'll, I'll give it to you, it's not great. These guys know most of the residents that come in, so they let them through. What we're trying to get across to them is, it doesn't matter if you know them, you have to check their IDs, and we've been working with our, with our staff to, to do that. The problem with the green waste is, we don't know if they're contractors or not. If they bring the right amount in and they have a local ID, then they're allowed to dump it. So we're, we're kind of at a loss ourselves as to how do you distinguish a, a landscaper from a person that owns a home there that is bringing it in?
The yardage, correct?
We've been trying to address it, but it's-
Right. And, and I was here in 2015, sitting in the back of a room, and we were talking about card checks and what other ways we could do this. This is an ongoing discussion, but I think that we're going to have to find a way to ensure that we're taking the waste from local residents and we're not doing commercial receiving on those, on those locations, just-
Right, and I, I agree. It's, and, but the, the ID check doesn't do that.
No, no.
And, and so we do have to come up with a, a different plan, and there's, there's been other things mentioned, but-
Well, if we can just start this conversation again now-
Yes.
And the Board continues to think about, maybe somebody will have an aha moment amongst staff, amongst Board members, whatever-
Right.
-that we can kind of figure out how we're going to do this, because right now, because of the proximity of Red Hill to Tewaolumie County, I know there's abuses that go on over there, but there's, it's very difficult to really-
Copperopolis also.
Yeah, and Copper is the same way. And Copper has another unique problem that I don't think a lot of the other transfer stations do, there's no turnpocket there. And you've had a lot of near misses. I, I mean, I talked to Copper Fire, and the number of things that happened right there in that vicinity is quite amazing, what the speeds at 45, sometimes 55 miles an hour, it's, it's difficult. I would like to, to also have us look at how we're taking care of the garbage that gets spread along, like, Oberon's Ferry Road or some of the other areas, as to how do we properly patrol for nuisances? And Copperopolis, the people even on social media are so frustrated, they're going out on their own time just to keep their community clean along that entire road segment from the bridge all the way up through past IGA. We've, we've got to figure that out. Red Hill doesn't quite have that problem, because Highway Four being a state highway, the state comes in there pretty quickly and cleans things up, but-
Well, I know that Paloma Road also, we-
Same problem.
We, we had a call on Paloma Road, and Phil and I actually went out to check it out, and we, we picked up a pickup load.
And where we're not able to get them to drop at the transfer stations, they're going to, they're, they're dropping it along Paris Ferry Road, they're going out on Camp Nine Road outside of Vallesito and dumping-
Freeco City Road.
Freeco City Road's another one. In other words, they're finding alternate ways. We need to be able to encourage them to get this material dropped in the right location so that they don't create a hazard, a mess for the rest of the community. So it's just part of a broader conversation, I'm sure, but it's still-
Well, these are all things that, you know, we've been in, we talk about all the time, and trying to come up with answers, and, and we go to different places and see what they're doing, and it's a constant battle on some of those.
On the generators, are you going to be able to provide generators to each one of your locations, or is this something that, because we know this PSPS event thing is not going away.
Right, so what we, what we did in the past, we purchased the generator that we have now, it's mobile, before the 2004 contract, and had the station set up with transfer switches and all that to make sure it's all safe, and-
Correct.
Because what would happen is, say, Willseyville would go down with power, and we'd take it up there and it'd run. Avery would go down at a different time, so we could get away with a mobile generator. When we did our contract for 2004, they said, "Well, we're just going to include that into the contract." So that's fine, we have it, it's all set up. Now all the power goes out at once. So this, this last series of what happened, we, we kept the, we changed it around. We ran Red Hill Transfer Station so we could cover the Highway Four corridor for a day. We moved it to San Andreas Transfer Station so we could cover that side of the county. And Copper, we had people divert down to the landfill, and then Paloma was open. So we, so we diverted from Paloma to San Andreas. I, I mean, we diverted from San Andreas to Paloma, and we opened an extra day to, to compensate for that. That doesn't work all the time, you know, people get, it gets backed up.
And whether that message gets out in a power outage is another question.
Right.
Because oftentimes, we're receiving this information literally the day after we knew it was open, kind of thing.
Exactly, and we tried to, we were scrambling, to be honest with you, we were scrambling to figure out a game plan. So basically, because we didn't know what was going to go out and what wasn't. And so when everything started going down and, and Paloma stayed open, I contacted my staff person there and called her, and she went in on a day that we were normally closed and open, and, and so everyone went to work and diverted traffic to wherever they needed to divert to.
Okay. Would buying generators for each location be something to consider?
Oh, yeah, I, I think it's the only way to go at this point, because like you said, it's not going to stop.
Right, right. I thank you for your responses.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I have some questions.
Sure.
And I, I haven't had this contract, I brought it up to Brian last night, because I wanted, got into this and wanted to read the contract, so I haven't had it long enough to look at it completely. However, from the original contract, it says that you're supposed to provide generators in time of, of power off. It didn't say that you're supposed to go from one to one. It says you're supposed to supply adequate generators for the facilities to operate on. And PSPs were, you knew they were coming. I, I just question why in 2004, when you got this contract, we didn't do that then, make sure that we had adequate power instead of just buying one generator and wheeling it around? We didn't equip these, these facilities the way it's saying in the contract, you were supposed to equip these facilities in case the power went off. And generally, when, when power goes off, whether it's a PSPS or, or not, it's wide swaths of power go off because of how it's designed in, in certain quads. So my concern is now, we're coming in, in 2019, 15 years later, and saying, "Oh, we need to purchase all of these generators," and we're asking the county to give us the money to do so, when, for 15 years, you've had an opportunity to do that. And that's a concern that I have, is to now, you, you could have paid for them over 15 years during the course of the contract, with your obligations that you signed in 2004 that's saying that you would do that. And now we have facilities closed, and I still question whether, just looking at this, whether Paloma needs a generator. In, in the contract, it says you need generator at Paloma, it says all facilities, it doesn't say excluding Paloma and Red Hill, it says all of the facilities that you need to have power for when the power goes off. And the PSPS, you didn't, you had your facilities closed.
Yes, sir.
And that's my concern as to, to what the contract says and what we're saying now, and I'm a contractor, so I-
So if I can address that-
Sure, sure.
So, like I said, we had the generator, we purchased the generator before the 2004 contract, and before that was in that contract and set it up. We never had any trouble until the, until they started shutting these down. Now, we started looking into these generators prior to the, the blackouts that we've been having. But, excuse me.
It's all right.
A little, a little trouble talking.
Can I interject something?
Hold on one second, though, yeah, that, that's fine, but I want to, I want to make, I want to read exactly what the contract says versus what's being said here. It says, "Any generator or similar equipment provided with an internal combustion engine shall be housed in the sound dampened structure such that the noise levels do not exceed 60 decibels at the exterior of the gatehouse door, and 40 decibels with facility boundary." So that makes it sound as though it was supposed to be, these generators are supposed to be housed permanently at the site within these storage facilities to get rid of the sound when they're running. So I, I'm just questioning it, because I, I see us, it's, it's in this 15 years later, it's coming up 15 years later, that we're not, we weren't prepared, we're not prepared. So you can answer-
My interjection was going to be that these generators will become county property, and the generator of the 2004 would be Gambi property.
Correct.
So there's a little subtlety there. This way, the county ends up with a generator for the life of the-
And I understand, that's what I'm questioning, right, why should we have to purchase these generators that are in their contract? Why should we have to maintain those? Are we, we've got, we don't even have employees that show up periodically at these sites. Who knows what's going to happen to these generators that we're purchasing, that's our property, that's going to say, "Well, I don't know, it used to work." That's, if, if it's their property, which it says it's supposed to be, then they're going to be responsible for their property.
Well, it's our property until the end of the contract, and at the end of the contract, it becomes county property, but the, the maintenance and the operation of those are Gambi disposals until the end of the contract. So part of our whole deal was setting up maintenance programs with the, the dealers and getting that all set up.
Okay.
Supervisor Stopp? I want to thank Gambi for being an excellent partner with the county for so long. You know, it, you know, there's been a lot of good, good work done. I seen, I've been touring with you, Mark, and, and to the different sites throughout the county, other than in my district, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of good things happening. You know, I have a hard time moving forward with a ten-year contract. You know, a one, one year right now until we can get some more of these issues ironed out, and then we can look at something, you know, more, more long-term from there. But I think, you know, with as little time as we had to review this and everything, I'd be tentative to sign on for a ten-year at this time.
In response to that, I would just like to state that, you know, part of that ten-year did include those generators. We're going to amortize the cost out over 10 years with IWM. That was one of the benefits to the county program. If we were to add those generators on a one-year contract, we will be, we will be picking up that entire cost in one year, and that's a pretty, you know, not something that can't be done, but that's a pretty steep grade. Now, the Board's well aware of what we're up against with the closure of Cell Two and opening Cell Three, which is going to be a, another issue, which we're going to take care of, and we'll get it fixed, but we're talking about some, some pretty big dollars. So I'll be honest with you, the, the ten-year, the ten-year contract allows us to be a little bit more fiscally conservative. Can't say, and that is if we were to do the generators. Now, if we drop off some of the things that you see in the ten-year versus the one-year, the one-year, we're not going to ask for the maintenance and the, and the painting and all of the things that we would do over the 10 years, we're not going to ask for that for the one-year, because it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Again, it's tied with cost, tied with time, you know, how much time does, do the Gambi employees actually have to do, to do those things? That's not to say, obviously, that when you say to see the safety issues, that needs to apply across the Board. We want to have the proper clearances. As an example, we got Red Hill, we got Cal Fire to come out and clean up Red Hill. We have a vegetation, and this is not a Gambi-related issue, but a vegetation management program pursuant to our agreement with the State Water Board. A couple of you are very much aware of that. The, both your closed Red Hill landfill and your open Rock Creek landfill look like parks now when we get them mowed. And there's a reason for that, there's a reason, I don't need to go into all of that, but it has ultimately helped slide prevention, is what it does, because of rodents and that kind of thing. So I, I can certainly understand Supervisor Stopper, your, your position on that. I can tell you that a year's going to go by very quickly, and at that point, do you want to do, and I think there's a provision inside of that even for a two-year extension, but do we want to do that, or do you want to open up to a request for a proposal next year, in which case you have some other agencies coming in like the, you know, potentially, I won't say they will, Waste Management, Cal Waste, et cetera? One of the things I can say, and, and being as neutral as possible on this, that's been a real benefit for me personally, is I'm over at the Gambi offices every week. These, this, this contractor, your contractor is a partner, is one of my key partners in making IWM's success. I wouldn't truthfully come to the Board with the recommendation of that ten if I really felt, just as, as your point person, if I felt that there was, there was going to be an issue. Not to say I don't absolutely understand and completely respect, which, whatever way the Board wants to go, we will, we will follow, but I just wanted to let you know, there is a relationship, a professional relationship that's been established over the last 14 months. I think even Mark, Mark would agree to that, where we're working together, maybe that wasn't done in the past so much. Along with that working together comes in, comes in a level of accountability I don't know if was there before or not. Gambi was left to their own devices, they did a good job with what they had, but am I, if I'm incorrect, were you going without a very little county input? I'm not throwing stones, I'm just saying, that's the reality. Today's a new day. These are, these are your contractors that I have a professional relationship with to try and make this entire program better. So I would just throw that into-
Yeah, we, we, good thing, I got it. You know, I think we all agree that Gambi's been a really good partner. I mean, you guys have very good customer service, I can understand why part of the problem, Mark, the local stations, we all, those of us who haul our garbage, we all know people at the station. That gets where I get some of the best information in the district on a Saturday. It's, it's, it's a hangout place. Sorry, I hope I don't cause a traffic jam for you guys, but also, you know, Supervisor Stopper and Supervisor Toffenelli have some very good points, and I think we all have a little bit of, this isn't a reflection on Gambi, but we all had some sort of indigestion about some of the Cal Waste contracts that have gone through, and so that, that hanging over this, it's not a reflection on you, but it might be a reflection, it might shed some light on some of our hesitancy. I mean, yeah, shoot, you live in my district, Mark. So we understand the relationship, and we understand what you're saying, Brian, but I think it's important to take into account, my fellow supervisors, we're on the Solid Waste Task Force, we're working on it.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, my question's for Brian. And, and, you know, you guys do a great job. I've never, I haven't heard any complaints from my constituents, other than when they're- I've never, I haven't heard any complaints from my constituents, other than when they closed because of the PSPS situation. But then, it was part of, we declared a state of emergency, so. We just did, so. Brian, my question to you is, I understand this is, the funding for all this, my concern over the tenure and the funding, and the funding going down with the escalating COLAs that go on with this thing. And as recyclables go down, if they do, and the cost, and no increase over since the beginning in 1991, or whenever it is, we put the property tax of $150. That's not gone up. The funding for this ten years, when we're in year seven of the contract, what's your, and I know you're, you're asking us to do this, so you must have some insight that you can coil my stomach from rumbling about the ten year to pay for this.
Understood. And I think that's how IWM got upside down in the first place, was all of those Cal recycle programs that said, "We shall do this, 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 this." You remember the good days for IWM. But, you know, and I'm really glad you brought that up, because there's a couple of things that I've noticed. You know, I calculated the weighted rate when I first got the department, it's $220 an hour. That's not a lot of money. But you start adding that up, it is a lot of money. Now, some of you, and especially Gary, will remember the days of when I was in environmental health and probably bringing the largest fee schedule forward for the board for adoption. As a matter of fact, that was stated from, from the board at one time. But a good example.
You had more hair then, too.
Pardon me?
I said, "We both had more hair about."
Yes, we did, we did. I had hair. But, you know, I'm really glad you brought that up, because here's one of the things that I've been talking to about with my administrative analyst. A good example of this is, anytime, just like in environmental health, anytime we take an action that is, let's say, not at the landfill doing regular operations, it's covered, it's already covered in that parcel fee you're talking about. If I take up a bin to the sheriff's office, okay, I load, the guy gets up from his desk, he goes out to the truck, he gets in the truck, he drives up to San Andreas, he drops it off, and he drives back. The cost to that, to the department, the actual cost is $220 an hour, okay? It doesn't matter, that is his cost, because that $220 an hour is a weighted rate. It includes your gas and oil, transportation, training, includes capital assets, everything from salaries, employee benefits, on down to services and supplies and capital assets. So, they fill up the bin with tires. I'm not picking on the sheriff's office, I'm just using it as an example. So, we're called up to go pick up the bin that's full of tires, and we bring it back to the landfill, okay? Again, $220 an hour for all of that time. That's a couple hours, maybe two and a half hours each trip, okay, round trip. Now, I'm paying to get rid of the tires. So, IWM is picking up the cost for getting rid of the tires as well. So, I'm using that as an example to say that there are areas, I'm looking at the program. And I know that's not a lot of money, but it does add up. I'm looking at these things going, "We've been doing this for free, for free, for free, for free." And I understand from within side of the county, because we're all under one label, we're all under one seal, okay? But the cost of doing business is the cost of doing business. And IWM, from what I'm looking at, has not been, has not been recouping, and at times didn't really need to, maybe. But today, it is critical. We're not recouping in those areas where we can actually recoup for those costs. That's one, that's one issue. And the other issue that hasn't been tackled since 1992, I think is what it was, 91, 92, is, is the parcel fee. The reality is that parcel fee was designed, as I understand it, for the disposal of solid waste. Pre-939, pre-all the other recycling mandates, pre-all the diversion requirements, all those things, pre-green waste, pre-all these other programs, okay? So, that parcel fee, which is a really good deal, and you go to any, any place else, any other landfill, you'd see a dramatic, we, we actually, actually, Gambi has put together some comparatives for different landfills that we're looking at as well. What is the true cost? Couple ways to deal with that. Do you keep the parcel fee where it's at, and say, "We increase our tipping, we actually charge a tipping fee," okay? We already charge a few dollars for yard waste. We're charging pennies. We're charging pennies on our cost. If it cost me $20, just, I'll just throw that number out, $20 for my attendant to go over and make sure that that material went where it's supposed to go at Red Hill Annex, but I recovered 20 cents to do that, what cents does that make? So, there's a lot of moving parts, just on the fiscal end of it. And Gary, you are absolutely on target, and you're absolutely correct, because I think that we have really been missing the boat on how to recover costs. And I don't mean in recovering costs and trying to put a tremendous burden on the public. But I am talking about, this is a cost of doing business, and how do we get closer to covering those costs? So, that is something we are looking at, yes.
Supervisor Mott? I'm kind of having heartburn over a tenure, even though economically, it makes sense. And the heartburn is because we don't know where the state's going. Cal recycle could tip our world upside down in a heartbeat, and then what do we do from there? And how do we recover those costs? So, I would be more interested in doing a one-year with, or even a two or three-year with some type of a re-opener that we could, if something should happen, that we could go back and review it, because we're not, they're not going to want to operate at a loss either.
No, and that's, and that's part of it, that they're dealing with.
The reality is, is that with the uncertainty of all of the other moving parts that we have within our solid waste program, there's a lot of, a lot of money that could be expended very quickly and put us really behind the ball.
Absolutely.
And it might lead to the closure of some of these locations, simply to solve the problem. And I don't want to go there. So, I would like us to look at a one-year with at least a two-year extension, and give us some time to really determine whether or not Cal Waste, with the diversion programs that are coming in 2020, and the reopen, and the opening of Cell Three, and all of the other pieces, give us a much better look at the financials on this thing before we make a decision to a longer-term contract. I know it's a win for them, and it would be a win for us, but that would be based upon today's dollars and today's laws and rules that we're operating under. It doesn't mean in five years from now, that's going to be the way it'll go. It could very easily go in a whole nother direction we're not ready for.
Understood. Also, I would like to remind the board that you have a, I want to say it's a 60-day out clause as well. So, that's very important. I mean, if for some reason, one year, or ten year, or five year, or three years, whatever the board, whichever the direction the board gives, I want to remind the board that you do actually have a clause wherein you can say, "The whole thing, the whole thing went sideways, we need to step out." So, that is in your contracts, both the one and the ten.
Well, I would hope we understand, if it goes sideways for them, they won't have that same.
If it's about to go sideways, you're going to hear from me first, but, and well ahead of time, but that's not the point. So, anyway, again, I certainly understand where the board's going on this. Again, I'm trying to do what I can to make, make things as smooth as possible for Integrated Waste, so that we're moving forward. I think the board is well aware of that. I want to, I want to thank, I want to thank Mark and Phil for the response to the PSPS as well. Because as the board knows, I sent out a notification to the board to let you know, and also did a press release pursuant to a request to do so, to show that we were actually making an effort, and we're at least keeping a station open no matter what. And then he had staff actually manned at the closed stations to make sure that that was redirected. Of course, we, if we do the generators, that's not going to be an issue. But I'm just saying, even if we don't do the generators, we are taking steps to make it work today.
Multiple things. You answered that, yes, we have hardship when it comes to the Integrated Waste Fund, but you never really, in my eyes, answered Supervisor Toffenelli's question about where we're at in year seven. So, you know, I see the benefits on a ten-year contract and spacing out the cost over of generators and other upkeep throughout the time. And, you know, the smaller things on a one-year contract, and it costs us a little bit more. But I think, I think we need to take the time and be very pragmatic about how we move forward with this situation. Because my understanding is that we don't have enough to fully get moving forward on the new cell after we close the first one down.
You are correct.
And where are we going to be at when, when this becomes full? Yes, we are saving a little time on the recycling, but that, that's minimal, I mean, in time. I would also like to see the Solid Waste Task Force start to meet again. We, we, I have reached out to you multiple times on this.
You have, absolutely.
And we have enough people that are approved by the board to be on that. And I think that this would be, you know, we could sit down and have these conversations with Gambi, and how we're moving forward, and get people in the community involved. And this is part of our public outreach in informing people with transparency.
Right.
So, these are all things that are important to me, and I think many of the other board members, I would assume, that, that, on how we, how we proceed, and we get the proper input from the community, and then we come forward with ideas, because I pulled the board on one of the ideas that you've come forward with earlier this year.
Correct.
And the board, board's still waiting. It's a possible source of revenue that will take, take some of the burden off the taxpayers and everything else. And this, I understand this kind of is off-topic, but it all has to do with the same topic. It has to do with the same topics, sir. And so, I would like to take the time and start getting all this stuff going forward. I personally support a one-year contract. I personally support working with Gambi for another 10 years. They've been excellent partners. I think they've done a great job. But I think moving forward on a ten-year contract with all these unknowns would be irresponsible of us right now.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes, let me throw out the following, and see if we have some consensus on it. I, I had some concerns, but looking at the overall picture, when we present the contract for the ambulance service, there's a, it's usually 10 years with a five-year open up and we look at it. So, going forward, and I understand Brian's concern with paying for generators, which obviously, going forward in this time that we live in, they're going to require generators there, a permanent generator housed there, not something you wheel around and try and start by pulling the chain. I mean, something that comes on automatically when the power goes off.
Right, that's right.
So, like a Generac or whatever, a Kohler. So, that in mind, and all the things it would have cost, and I understand Supervisor Mills and Stoppa's idea about a 10-years. So, what if we agreed to a 10-year contract on the basis that every two years it's revisited? That we can relook at it and see if it's working or not working, what is working, what isn't working? At least we have the ability to come back. It would give Gambi the sense that we want to invest in them, give them the 10-year contract, have that partnership, but yet, at the same time, it gives us the opportunity to come back and reassess what's going on, and make adjustments if things start going south financially-wise or what have you. We do have the 60-day clause, we can say, "Adios, see you, nice time." But I don't think that's, that's fair. They, they have been, and I kind of grilled them on the generator because of what it's in the contract. And I can't just say, "Just go." I'd like to wreck the steel, but you got to go buy me a forklift. But I think if we can do that, and we can reopen it up in a couple of years, or even the first year, after we go into a 10-year, we can open it up the first year, and then two years, every two years after that, or five years after that, at least it gives us the ability to relook at it, reassess, see what, where we're going avenues-wise on funding, where consumables are, where recyclables are, what we're doing. And it would, I think, be beneficial for us and them at the same time.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment also. I'm very concerned that we haven't, Solid Waste Task Force hasn't met, discussed this specific contract. I'm concerned about us modifying a contract from diocese up here without sitting down and going through this. I hear everything, I don't think that anybody said anything out of line as far as where we're at, we're all feeling.
No, this is all very clear.
It may be one of these items that, and I, we've got a long-term relationship, we're going to keep working together, but it might be an opportunity to take a step back, have the Solid Waste Task Force meet, have council sit down, go through this. And I, when I look at the default term, I look at the 60-day termination, that's based upon only the default of the contractor. So, it's not a "we can just walk away" type deal. So, I'd like to think that we take a step back, maybe push this off a little bit, and take another bite at it in another month before the end of the year. I'm not sure. I mean, that's just an idea.
I, I understand, and that makes sense. The board needs to be aware that we're up against a end-of-December timeline. The other option would be to do the, to do the one-year extension now, and certainly iron those things out, as Supervisor Stoppa was, was actually recommending. I mean, I really like what Supervisor Toffenelli was saying. I, before we went further on with that, I was going to say, "We could do that every two years in a study session format, the board could go ahead and, you know, vet the entire process, where are we going?" Supervisor Stoppa's been absolutely correct. He's been, he's been stating we need this Solid Waste Task Force. I will tell you that it's, it's on my desk, it's been not, no excuses, one fire after another in integrated waste. And it's not that it's not a priority, it's just been one of those things where, between the State Water Board and what we're dealing with today, has been taking priority. But, again, that's why that task force is in place. So, the good news is we actually have the members now, where we didn't have them in the past. So, that's why it stopped meeting.
And I can confirm Brian's experience with how busy he's been dealing with these issues. There have been issues that haven't been dealt with in a decade, that he's been rectifying through the State Water Resources and Control Board, and addressing notices of violation to the point where the county's circumventing fines and other things. And he's done an excellent job, I do appreciate that. So, I don't want to take away from anything that he's done, but I think that part of the process should include the Solid Waste Task Force.
And I would agree, I would agree with the board on that matter.
Okay, let's have, let's have the check public comment, and then we can see if we can wrap this thing up.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this item?
In Mariposa, they have a agreement with Yosemite National Park. And because they got together, they got a, they got money from the government. But anyway, they have a place, and they separate everything. And that's what I do at home, I separate stuff, and I rinse it, and then I take it out to the dump. My newspapers go in the same place that my jars go in, the cans go in, you name it goes in. And I, what have I separated all this stuff for? I'm going, I just don't believe it. In Mariposa, if you take your stuff to the dump, you either have it separated, or you pay to have it dumped. And so, the other thing is the organic waste. There is no reason to take organic waste and fill in the dump with organic waste. Organic waste should be recycled, it's a natural resource, and it's a renewable resource. It should not be treated as something that you dump. It should be ground up and put back in the ground. I don't care what, but it should not be in the dump.
Thank you very much. Another comment. See, now, break back to board, gentlemen, you want to address this?
Well, I think in the short term, until the Solid Waste Task Force meets to have this conversation, we are going to need to at least extend this contract for a year. That's, to me, I see that as the minimum. Once we get that done. Once we get that done, then we can come back, even during the course of that year, and go after a longer-term contract or have some other options available. But because, I mean, you, you gentlemen, remember, we were meeting every three months up until this last year. But Brian, you, you saved us literally $10,000 day fines by clearing up these notices of violation. So there are priorities, and I understand that. So, let's get the task, let's, let's do a one-year extension, Task Force a chance to meet. I know I'm part of that as well. And then we can have that fuller conversation. We can come back to the board with some recommendations of what we think is the best way to handle this, and still allow them to continue under the certainty that they have a future with their business.
And, and, I'm sorry.
That, that would be my motion, is to, to provide a one-year extension on the contract with the understanding that the, the Solid Waste Task Force would meet very soon, and that we would come back to the board with a recommendation as to what other modifiers and contract extensions we may go with beyond that.
Okay.
Diane, Diane, have you got that now?
We have a one-year extension, meet and die.
And, and a priority of the, of the Solid Waste Task Force would be for the further extension of this program?
Correct.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I, counsel, can you please speak to this? Because I, I got a feeling that a major, I agree with the majority of what Mr. Mills is relaying, because that's, I feel, what I've been relaying since the very beginning of this, this item. But, you know, adding in a contingency on the Solid Waste Task Force, um...
I can pull that through the motion if that can.
I, I, I feel like this is the direction we can give Brian to, do, and they should do it. They have input from the public, but at the very end, the board makes the decision at the end of the day.
Okay.
I, I, I could be, I could be wrong.
No, I can modify the motion to just the one-year extension, but board direction that we would do the rest of what we just talked about.
I just want to clarify that, that the motion would be to extend it for one year.
With board direction.
I understand, but I, my concern is modifying a contract that's before the board. Would that be the only modification? Is essentially taking it from 10 to one, and would you be approving the amendment?
It's one of the options.
It's one of our options already, is the one-year. So I, 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 the motion would be the one-year contract is, that, that's where I'm trying to get. And then, then there would be direction from the board for Brian, Brian to get the proper input so we can move forward on a contract that potentially puts us in a long-term with Gambi, our good friends in the future.
That is, that is the motion. That's what I was trying to get to.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, so is pounding at the computer?
No, I just, I have the, I have the 10-year, and then I'm seeing that there's two options. I didn't see the one-year contract actually attached to the item before.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Call the, call the favor.
Aye.
Opposed? As this four, zero, one, absent.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your work.
Thank you. And thank you.
And thank your employees that work at the transfer stations.
Oh, thank you, thank you. We will relay that. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I don't have my mic on. You know, it's three o'clock, you've been patient, but we're going to take a 10-minute Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting. I believe we're on item 29.
We are. Item 29 is from the Planning Department to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution revising the appeal fee for the Planning Department.
All right. This is a public hearing, and it is now open?
Okay. Good afternoon, Peter Mauer, Planning Director. So back in April, we adopted a new fee schedule for the Planning Department. At that point in time, we did not propose to modify the fee for appeals. The board directed me to come back for discussion on that. So that's what the purpose of this public hearing is for. At this point, I'm not recommending any change, but I did provide an analysis of sort of what it costs for the county to process your, your typical appeal. I say typical because they really run the gamut. Recall the hearing that we had on the gun club issue. Some of those may, who may have been around for the asphalt plant issue. Those obviously took a lot more time, and some of them are really pretty straightforward and take, you know, very little time. Typically, a planning fee is based on average cost. And so what I provided is sort of the, the range of time that typically takes, about 10 to 20 hours to process an appeal. That fee would then range from, you know, about $700 to $1,400, based on our hourly rate, with the middle being $1,082. The balance that we're trying to strike here is cost recovery versus making a deterrent for the public to petition the Planning Commission or you when they feel that they haven't been heard. So, which is the reason why we are just recommending that it stay the same. Back in 2016, we did an amendment. The fee at that point in time was $100. We recommended it be $300. The board increased it to 500 at that time. So that's basically the background. You have the opportunity to modify the fee, either raise it or lower it, as long as it's not more than $1,082, because that's, you know, the analysis that shows that would be the maximum amount. We cannot charge more than the cost of what it is, that what it takes to, to process an appeal. If you leave it the same, no action needs to be taken. If you want to modify it, I would suggest that you modify the resolution to put in the actual number that the amount should be. Do you have any questions with me?
Any questions on the boards? Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, the information that you've given us, would you consider this to be nexus study material here, or is this simply just drawing an average?
That is to provide the nexus. I mean, and, and part of the nexus study that we would do for any fee would be to look at what are our typical costs? And then, again, we base most of our fees on an average, which is acceptable practice under state law.
I remember the public pushback in 2016 when it, when it went up.
Yes.
It was quite vocal.
It was.
Yeah. So, okay, so as long as we know what range we're working in.
Right.
Questions on the boards? Public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will, yes, Ms. Gordon?
In order to be fair to everyone, it should be low as possible, because a lot of people do not have a lot of money. And if people who have money are able to have an appeal and people who do not have money cannot afford to have an appeal, that is not fair.
Is there a public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and close the public hearing as we move towards a decision what we want to do. Is there a motion? There's, if we decide not to make a change, if I understand this correctly, then there's no action to be taken.
Yeah, I, I'd propose that we actually lower it to $300, if we can get a consensus here of the board. There's been major pushback. A lot of times, a lot of people have, I think, not appealed things because of the cost. And I happen to agree with Ms. Gordon that people that have items that come before the Planning Commission and they wish to appeal, they don't have a lot of money. The whole project that they came before the commission cost them a lot of money to begin with. $500 to some people is a lot of money. So I would propose to lower it to $300.
Is there any support for that proposal? We'll take it in form of a motion, is to $300, is that a motion? Is there a motion, Supervisor Toffen?
I would consider that a motion, to lower it to 300.
Is there a second for that, or further discussion on that item?
I think out of fairness to the general public and the amount of pushback that I remember in 2016, that would be a reasonable request. I'll second the motion.
Board Chair, before taking an action on this, I would recommend, because it is a reduction in the fee, that there be something included in the motion as far as making a public benefit finding for the reduction, because obviously 500 or 300 is still less than what it's overall going to cost the county for processing an appeal.
I could, I could say that. Thank you for bringing that up. You know, as a public benefit to the public itself, and seeing that the cost to be lowered in order to meet that, that threshold of, for the public and being a benefit to them, I would move for $300.
Mark Oliver, do you have a statement to make, Supervisor Stopper?
I, I actually have some questions on another idea I was thinking about, you know, which may go along with the reduction in the future, and maybe Peter can answer this. Maybe I'm too far out of the box when I'm thinking about this. But if we were to lower the pill fee, and at a certain point, you know, a lot of times when the pill fee is too low, it doesn't matter if it's the pro-business person or the person that's against the business appealing the issue. A lot of times, they'll just start throwing in appeals just because they can, because $100 is nothing to some people. Is there a way, if they don't go through with their appeal, to incur the rest of the cost to them if they're unsuccessful on their appeal? You, you, you know, so let's say if you kept track of your time on an appeal, would you be able to give them the full cost if they were unsuccessful on their appeal?
I'm not certain of the, how, how consistent that is with state law requirements. We can charge on a case-by-case, you know, if we establish a, an hourly rate for, we have that for certain kinds of, of projects, in the EIR, for example, we charge on time and material. We could charge time and material. I would be hesitant, although I don't know if it's necessarily illegal, to charge someone a higher cost if they lose their appeal than if they win the appeal. I, I guess in a way, it's sort of, I think what you're getting at is, you know, a court case. The winner of the court of the case usually, you know, doesn't have to pay attorney's fees, they collect it from the, the losing party. I, I, I think that there is a certain amount of equity involved in, particularly with the citizen appealing the decision of, of me or the Planning Commission to their elected officials, that, you know, they have the right to petition their government, and this is one of those fundamental rights.
Somewhat of a chateau and balance.
Yeah. And so, and so there, there is, yes, the general taxpayer is, is picking up that difference. But in the overall context of the amount of appeals that we have, the, you know, cost of running, you know, the Planning Department, let alone the entire county government, it's probably a very, fairly small amount. And I think that trying to track our time in that manner, and then you lose your appeals, or then you get stuck with the bill, that's not going to sit very well.
Right. Understood. I, we have a first and a second, sir. I just, I had a question that I did want answered.
I have a, I have something. You know, I, I'm a little concerned about this. I think about lowering it. I understand why, why we want to deal with this, but, you know, we raised it in many ways to avoid nuisance appeals. And I'm, I'm concerned, you know, we spent a lot of time doing various nexus days on different projects to make sure we have full cost recovery for everything, right? I mean, down to the nickel. And now we're going to suddenly say, these actually cost us $1,082, but we're only going to charge you 500, now we're going to take it down to 300. So in many ways, I would consider this a gift of public funds in many ways. I mean, I find out, I think my main point is I'm finding a hard time with the consistency that we're either charging people for what things cost across the board, or we're not. And so I will, I'm not going to support a reduction in the fee. So we have a first, we have a second. Everybody's made a statement, we'd had public comment. I'll call the question.
Just to clarify, the, the motion is adopting the resolution as amended, and the last line in the therefore be resolved would say, adopt a revised fee for appeals to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors to $300.
That's the way I understand that.
And, and adding the public benefit fighting as read into the record.
Found to be a public benefit.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm clerk, why don't you call, roll call on this one?
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Stopper?
When, we, we talk about multiple issues, and cost recovery comes up consistently, and making sure that staff does it. At this point, we're not near what the cost is, so therefore, I would like to leave it as it sits. No.
Supervisor Garamendi?
No.
It's a two-to-two vote with one absent.
So the motion fails. May I offer a suggestion that there is a motion to continue this item until there is a full board? It would possibly break the tie.
I get the suggestion, but I'm not hearing any motion to reconsider from the floor in the Diocese.
And I would just remind the board that you can also consider alternative motions.
Okay.
If there are any.
Seeing none, I think this is, vote a halt.
Okay.
No action taken. Thank you.
Item 30 is from the Planning Department to approve a lot line adjustment 19-14 on land restricted by Agricultural Preserve Number 27 for Marie F. Chadock.
Good afternoon, Gina Cathen County Planning. Much as we have done before, this, this item and the following item, 31, are actually linked together, two parts. So the first part, of course, the lot line adjustment for Marie Chadock, happens to be a lot line adjustment between two parcels of land that are both in the Agriculture Preserve. One parcel of land is located in Calvers County, and the other parcel is in San Joaquin County. The proposed lot line adjustment is to merge a two-and-a-half acre portion of the property in Calvers County owned by Marie Chadock with the property in San Joaquin County. The purpose of the lot line adjustment is to alleviate the trespass of a driveway that currently serves as access to the San Joaquin County property. To facilitate the lot line adjustment, or to facilitate a lot line adjustment in the Agriculture Preserve, you must make seven findings to substantiate consistency with Government Code Chapter 51257. Those findings are rolled into the draft resolution that you have before you. The second part of this actually will be to simultaneously resend the original contract and re-enter into a new contract illustrating the new boundary of the new parcel. In 1971, Edmund Freitas established Ag Preserve Contract Number 27 for 322 acres of land. Over the years, the preserve has been divided and is no longer in common ownership. What remains is the 167.42 acre parcel, which is owned by Marie Chadock and described by the county as APN 50016181. The lot line adjustment will have no effect on the current agricultural operation, and again, the 2.5 acres is an existing driveway, which is not currently in ag operation. Both the lot line adjustment and the Agriculture Preserve contract are exempt from CEQA, and a notice of exemption has been prepared for filing. This item has... exempt from CEQA and a notice of exemption has been prepared for filing. This item has been heard by your appointed agriculture advisory committee and your agricultural commissioner, and they both recommend the approval of the lot line adjustment and then subsequent to that, the disestablishment of ag preserve contract 27 and the establishment of ag preserve contract 374 totaling 165.42 acres of land.
Any questions? Supervisor Mills? Oh, sorry. Public comment? Seeing none. Bring it back to the board for further discussion or motion.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero one absent.
Item 31 is from the Planning Department to adopt a resolution to disestablish California Land Conservation Contract Agricultural Preserve Number 27 and simultaneously establish California Land Conservation Contract Agricultural Preserve Number 374 totaling 165.42 acres for Marie F. Chadock, trustee of the Marie F. Chadock Trust.
So this is the part two. Same thing. Just need to establish, disestablish the existing contract and establish the boundary of the new contract, knowing that the 2.5 acres is now transferred over to the portion of ag preserve contract in San Joaquin County.
Questions from the board? Supervisor Stopper? No? Public comment? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero one.
Item 32 is from the Planning Department to adopt a resolution to disestablish California Land Conservation Contract Agricultural Preserve Number 110 and simultaneously establish California Land Conservation Contract Agricultural Preserve Number 376 totaling 136 acres for Kurt H. and Sharon L. Hurtline of the Kurt H. and Sharon L. Hurtline 2005 Trust dated October 26, 2005.
So the county received a California Land Conservation Contract application from Kurt and Sharon Hartline for 136 acres consisting of one single parcel up off of Sumner Road in West Point. In 2017, the Hartlines purchased the property from the Dunlap family. Their intent is to maintain the existing 12-acre organic walnut orchard. In addition, utilize the land to graze 37 head of registered Angus cattle. Our agriculture, or excuse me, our farm advisor, county farm advisor Scott Onetto conducted a feasibility study which confirms an gross annual income from the cattle operation to exceed $7,000, which therefore exceeds the minimum $2,000 requirement to be eligible for the ag preserve. The land has been in the ag preserve since 1971 when R.E. and Betty Dunlap established ag preserve contract 110 for the same 136 acre parcel. This item has, is exempt from CEQA and a notice of exemption has been prepared. Your ag advisory committee, in addition to your agricultural commissioner, have considered this application and their recommendation to you is to disestablish ag preserve contract 110 while simultaneously establishing ag preserve contract number 376 totaling 136 acres of land for Kurt H. and Sharon L. Hartline. Questions?
Questions? Seeing none. Public comment? Ms. Corder?
I'm using this as another opportunity to say that a lot of the changes that are being made with the Planning Commission are with the idea of growing marijuana. And this particular one is in prime timber growing land.
Thank you. Any other further public comment? Seeing none. It's, this is the old Dunlap property.
The old Dunlap property. And the Hartlines actually are farmers down in the Linden area and they do have additional family that owns the adjacent properties as well currently in the ag preserve.
Mr. Chair, this is your district, so I will make the motion for you.
Thank you very much, Supervisors. Motion by Supervisor Toffenelli. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero one absent. That's it, Gina?
She's done. She's done.
She's out of here.
Item 33 is from the Planning Department to conduct a public hearing, adopt a negative declaration, and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 016026076 and 016026077 and 016026078 from unclassified to general agriculture for Kevin Clay. Authorize publication of brief description and map of reclassified property.
Department. I'm taking this for Madeline Flandreau, who is unfortunately out sick today. So there's a zoning amendment, 201939 for Kevin Clay. Proposed change from unclassified to A1 general agriculture on three parcels of 40 acres each totaling 120 acres. It's located off of Marinatha Lane in District 2, south of Jesus Maria Creek. You can see the property here. It includes the three of the four quadrants and the east and south side. As you noticed, these were sites of former cannabis cultivation. The proposed ordinance, that was, not proposed ordinance, the adopted ordinance would allow cultivation of cannabis regardless of the zoning, whether this is approved or not. Currently, it's unclassified. That's allowed on these sites as well as in the A1 zone. Under the current general plan, it's identified as future single-family residential, five acre minimum. But under the proposed general plan, it's resource production recognizing the rural, remote nature of the property, the potential for timber and agricultural production. So the resource production designation established to primarily identify those lands that are most capable for timber production and agricultural operations and also where it's away from the public services and utilities and higher density community regions. Current zoning, as you see, there is agricultural preserve to the north. Most of the property around it is unclassified. There is the 40 acres to the south, which is in general agriculture. Larger tract of land to the, to the east is BLN land. So the current zoning, as you said, is unclassified. It is identified as an interim zone and is tend to, just stay that way until a more appropriate zone is identified. We will be going through upon final adoption of the general plan with a countywide rezone. But the applicant had requested that this be processed, filed the application earlier this year to rezone it to general agriculture. A negative declaration was prepared for this in, earlier this year. There was a 30-day public comment period. We received no comment letters on the negative declaration. Found that there were no significant impacts associated with this proposed zoning amendment. Planning Commission heard this in September and recommended that the board approve the zoning amendment. So the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance amendment from unclassified to A1. It's consistent with the general plan update. The current zoning code and the general plan policies encourage the zoning of land to agriculture where it's appropriate and is compatible with the surrounding area. Do you have any questions?
So Peter, just so I'm clear. So under, under our proposed general plan, that we'll hopefully take care of in the next couple of weeks, next week, this would, is compatible with that?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, agricultural zones are compatible, resource zones are really compatible in any land use district in, under the current general plan. So even though it's identified as future single-family residential, the resource production zones are found to be consistent with all land use categories under the current general plan. It's definitely consistent with the resource production designation under the draft general plan, which will be before you next week.
Thank you. Questions on the board? Questions from the public? Public comments?
The general plan, the addendum to the general plan or the addendum to the EIR of the general plan and the EIR are inadequate to environmental prospects. It does not take into consideration that replanting of timber is not addressed. It is something that California is responsible for overall and we're one little speck of California. But it's a sad day when we let a weed take precedence over timber growing and the air cleaning possibilities that timber provide.
Thank you. For the public comment? Seeing none. Bring it back to the board for the questions, comments, or a motion.
Was this property affected by the fire?
Yes, it was.
It was, it was part of the fire area? I just thought I'd ask. It looked like it was. Looking at the aerial photos.
Yes, you look at that aerial image, you can clearly see that it was burned over a portion of the property there. And this is a 2018 image, so that's three years after the fire, over two and a half years after the fire.
So, Mr. Chair, this is your district again. Are you in favor?
I am.
So I will make the motion for you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Motion by Supervisor Toffenelli. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero one absent. And we have closed the public hearing with that motion. Okay. Supervisor announcements?
In compliance with AB 1234, chapter to Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also at the board member's discretion include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
If it's all right with everybody, I'd like to do a quick poll. We'll do announcement. I'll do the poll. Supervisor Mills, why don't you begin? Yeah, Thursday, last Thursday, 24th, Tina McCoo was over at Mark Twain for cancer awareness and I was one in attendance. 25th, Senator Borges was at CCWD and I noticed another supervisor was there as well. Very good conversation with him. Over primarily to me was the insurance for homeowners in Calvers County. And on the second, there was a dinner at the, for the great elementary school down in Copperopolis that we attended. This Friday, the 8th, I will be at the Mountain Counties Meeting in Auburn and should bring back some really good stuff from that. Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Stopper?
I also attended the meeting with Senator Borges. The insurance came up. Also, we gave some recommendations on how to address and what some of the issues are addressing when it comes to the PSPS situations and PGNI. He, he was very receptive and hopefully we can have some positive state legislation to help us deal with these instances as we move into the future.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
The only thing I have to report is a COG meeting tomorrow night. I'm here in the chambers, 5:30. And if your poll is to poll whether it was nice without Merida, I'm yes.
Very good. I have nothing I'm required to report, but I do want to compliment the county and in particular our staff for their Halloween efforts. Many of the offices were just spectacular and the costumes were just classic. So it was a, I have to, I have to admit, I had a great time coming here for Halloween. I have a quick piece of housekeeping to take care of. We have to do a special meeting to, for the auditor controller interviews and I'd like to poll a couple of dates with you guys. If you can, if everybody's got their calendar. The dates are December 13th, presented by the clerk came up, is December 13th, excuse me, 12th and 13th, Thursday and Friday. We only need one of them.
December?
Yes, sir. December 12th to 13th, Thursday and Friday.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with the 12th.
Stopper, Garmendi?
12th.
It is. We'll just have to let Supervisor Colley know that's what we're going to do. Okay. We have another poll, Supervisor Mills? Yes, regarding the issue of the mini horses. My wife was before this board within the last year discussing the very same thing about Title 6.12. It might be an opportunity for the board to start providing some direction to the revision of 6.12. I know that Tuolumne and Amter County are more strict. We do not have to mirror state code, but that is currently what we're doing. And I would just like the, to get a direction from the board that we might move forward with a revision of our vicious dog response in the county with Title 6.12.
It's, I've been talking to the owners of the horses. I think that, you know, a meeting to visit on how we need, how we want to move forward on, on this as a board is not a bad idea. This, this is a crucial issue. And I can, I could support a meeting to discuss how, how the board would like to move forward in the future on that.
So having agenda come forward, is that what we were thinking? Or did you guys want to have a subgroup and then bring something forward?
I-
Counselor?
I just want to remind, any, like creation of an ad hoc, ad hoc needs to be agendized. So anything will have to come back. I would just like clarity on what it is Supervisor Mills, you're wanting to come back, whether it be a-
Simply board direction for the staff to work on revising 6.12 to, to make it stricter than what it currently is. Looking at other counties and other options that the board can look at and decide what would be their best interest.
So then the item coming back at a future date would actually be that amendment or would be a study session to discuss what this board would like to see in an ordinance?
We could do a study session. We could do it whatever way the board feels. I can get a consensus for- Yeah, no, I, I, I think a, a study session.
A study session.
Where, not a whole meet, but we'll have an item. Having to come present, counsel, see if there's any changes or direction, and probably the recommendations from the staff.
I agree.
And then we can bring back any changes.
Yes.
Does that work, Counsel? Karen, you a board with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
I have one more question for the ad hoc.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm okay with that too. Four oh one.
Got it.
We have an ad hoc committee, uh, regarding the jail and its demolition, and we haven't heard from the ad hoc committee in quite some time. I certainly would like to hear a report from them at the earliest convenience.
You want me to answer that? With the PSP, we had, we had meetings scheduled, but with PSPS situations going on, we've had to counsel a couple of them, so we haven't met. Um, but it's been rescheduled for December 4th.
No, it's Thursday.
This Thursday, November, yeah. This Thursday at 7:00. So this meet, and then we can report back out of that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
But, um, again, uh, we need to have the discussion, uh, Mr. CAO, uh, during that agenda, uh, concerning the jail and Ketchel. Okay?
We should have, uh, Supervisor Mills, we should hopefully be back to you in a month. I think we're due to update everybody on what's going on. So I think that's a good call. Um, yeah, PSPS off.
Twice.
Very well. Um, CEO, anything? Adam Counsel? Adam Clerk?
After your meeting number seven, you should go get your flu shot.
Right here. We've been ordered to go get our flu shots after the 7th. Very well. No further ado, this meeting stands adjourned.